Oh back to Europe, racist! Oh back to Europe, you racist liars! It's my best friend! Racist liars! These are racists right here! The huge terrorized community! We need to get them! Let's get them together! Racism and comedy and racism! Let's get them out! Get out racist! Oh back to Europe, racist! There you are, racist! Yes, we're here! The sun is on here! The sun is shining to Europe! Here! The sun is shining to Europe! Don't go anywhere! Where? I don't know where! Yeah, where?
You are weak! Racist! Back to Europe! I come from Russia!
You got some Trump supporters! Now you say... A guy that said he would kill... Now this man is a kid! You support people that will kill! Women and kids, that's what he said! That's who you support! That will try for racism! And he is illegal alien just like you are! Or racism on your face! Racism, right? Oh back to Europe, racist! Get out of the Russian community!
I'm not going anywhere!
We're not gonna... We're not gonna rush you know with you, okay?
I'm not going anywhere!
Get back to Europe, I mean! Get back to Europe!
Right here!
Get me! Fuck racist! I just said that! Bro, be careful you're in there! You're a moron fucking asshole! Is this even a show? These children? You got a better example, I said! You got a better example, I said!
You're a dying breed! You're a dying breed! You're a dying breed! You are a dying breed! You are a dying breed!
Anywhere!
That's it! You're not...
I'm not going anywhere!
There's a sentence, Will! Two hundred years! We're the majority!
You're a dying breed!
Does Mexico have centuries of... I don't think so.
It's still boring?
Wait, Alex?
I'm a native! I'm a native! So you're a sailor, you're a nubray? Musa, homie? Halisco's over there, homie? Halisco's over there? Halisco's over there? Halisco's over there? Yeah, 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 yeah! Yeah, what you doing, officer?
You're ignorant, dude.
Uh, you made a good one, homie! Buenza! Buenza! What about it, bro? So what is it that you live for? What is it that you want? What is it that you want to... So what about it? So what am I gonna find? So what am I gonna find? What about it, homie? I'm American culture! LA culture! LA culture! LA culture! LA culture! LA culture! LA, LA, homie? LA culture! LA culture! So what about it? So what about the LA culture? What about it?
Shut up!
What about it? So what about it? What about it? So what about it? LA culture! LA culture! That's my culture, LA! That's a fake, that's a lie!
Today is the day to adjourn our meeting. At nine thirty-three.
American, USA.
He's American too, dude? He's American too?
Please, uh, sure.
No, there is no problem. What's your problem?
That we need to do it legally. We need to come legally, homie? See you? Hey, listen, listen. We need to start, otherwise we're gonna...
We are trying to run a meeting. Thank you.
Okay, members of the public are advised that all agents by your telephone and other communication devices are to be turned off on entering the city council chambers. If you need to have a discussion with someone in the audience, kindly step out of the seats. Under the government code, the city council may regulate disruptive behavior that exceeds the city council limits. Disruptive conduct may include, but is not limited to, screaming or yelling during another audience member's public comment period, profane language directed at individuals in the meeting room, throwing objects at other individuals in the meeting room, physical or verbal altercations with other individuals in the meeting room, and going beyond the allotted two-minute public comment period directive. When a person or group's conduct disrupts the meeting, the mayor or presiding officer will request that that person or group stop the disruptive behavior and warn the person or group that they will be asked to leave the meeting room if the behavior is abusive. If the person or group refuses to stop the disruptive behavior, the mayor or presiding officer may order the person or group to leave the meeting room and may request that those persons be escorted from the meeting room. Now, I am asking that we all have a respectful meeting. Everyone has the right to come up and speak during their two minutes and say what they wanna say. But I'm asking everyone else to not yell while the other person is speaking. If you have signs, if you have your signs, just keep them under your chin if you're sitting down or stand up against the wall where you're not blocking anyone. If you're sitting down, do not stand up and block anyone. And... Cameras, video cameras. You can video from either your seat or on the side wall. You cannot come up here and video somebody's speech. Have respect for me, please. And, thank you.
Okay, with that? So you can clear it, please, uh, the roll call?
Yes. Good evening, members of the public and city council members. Councilmember Guerrero? Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember Sanchez? This is Mayor Hernandez?
President.
Mayor Garcia?
Um, so you so acknowledged. Okay. Thank you. Uh, with that... Excuse me, repeat, okay? Great, thank you for noting that. Uh, with that, we'll proceed with Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, councilmember Sanchez, you're being given the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
For all, all, all!
Americans, homie! Americans! Americans! That's right, Americans! American citizens!
Great, thank you.
No illegals, homie. Not twisted.
You, you, read the Constitution, homie.
Yeah.
You gotta read the Constitution. No, you read it, read it.
Okay, with that, we have four presentations. Uh, we have little learning...
Including you, winner.
Winner, what?
Yeah, including you.
He's a racist, little racist.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, sure, homie.
Global standard.
Si, si, hombre, si.
You know you are.
A la mierda, puto.
Whatever, whatever. That's how you die, that's how you die.
Si, shut the fuck up, dude.
It's my country.
It's my country too.
So what's your problem? It's real trade.
Uh huh, sure.
So, sir, we consider the following question, and remember, homie, like, what do you think is the biggest problem in your community? From that, we've got, uh, the first, the dumping of toxic trash, second, vandalism, third, illegal, illegal, illegal drugs, or abandoned buildings, five, voiding, and six, legal authorities. Although, sir, we told that dumping of toxic trash was the biggest problem, uh, analyzing yield, the problems which is by law, there are group, progress mentioned into the list. Heterosexual report abandoned buildings could be all six problems. The houses of the industry are old trash, vandalism, and there's these are the reasons why, so this is the problem for the problem. We want to exist on maybe it has some abandoned buildings on uh, local, national, international communities, and there are uh, uh, it's a problem.
Hello, Patrick Guerrero, I'm gonna explain why this is the problem in the community. I'm sorry you're wrong, because my speaker is, uh, interrupting me. And so I'd like to invite him to announce to the public what is on the side.
Please speak. I'm sorry for my councilmember interrupting you. Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is our time to speak.
You were interrupting me, so I want you to be calm.
Be in the face of it!
Please believe it's best, though. Please, guard.
It's all about respect, homie. What about babies? It's California, I'm a Californian.
You have word number one over there. Thank you. Let's be respectful for the kids, for the students here. Starting with the council. Thank you.
Come on, let's welcome the kids to the...
Word number one again. Second word. Thank you.
The building is now abandoned. But a building is considered abandoned once it has become a nuisance to the community. Your owner has officially stopped uh, doing his basic responsibilities to keep the building clean. It has now become abandoned. And it's now a hub for trash, vandalism, and trespassers. An abandoned property is most likely to be used for illegal activity as described in the Broken Window Theory by George Kelling and James Q. Wilson. If a, if a window is broken in an abandoned building and it is not repaired the first time, it will be broken again and again, saying that that building is now abandoned and will never be fixed. And trespassers and squatters and people like that will decrease its property value by doing drugs in it and possibly starting a drug manufacturing in within it. And because of that, the, not, not the, all the windows are broken, they will never be fixed, so they will use, they will use it for that. Abandoned buildings, abandoned buildings also affect the atmosphere of the community as a whole, because if a, a community has a lot of abandoned buildings around it, it makes the building, it makes the buildings and, and the community around it look look poor or like just run down. It makes the city look run down. And potential residents tend to not wanna, tend to not want to live near the, near those buildings or around them as, because there might be people doing drugs there. And people like squatters who live, who live in these abandoned buildings decrease property value for the, for the, those buildings. And also lowers the city's tax pay. That's pretty much it. It gives the aesthetic away to the city. It lowers the, it gives the aesthetic away to the city.
Hi, I'm here, but I can not be told the conversation. Um, certainly, uh, such as anything and windows and water, um, we had to, um, um, issue. With that, we then prove that there are other consequences such as, uh, occupation. And, uh, while all the communities that they have potentially funds for renovation, services, together and to, to help create a, a very integrated and communicative realm. Any steps following this follow the agenda for, for...
Great. Thank you very much for that information.
The president, uh, my graduation flag, the gentleman, and then also the lady with the sign. The lady with the sign is, uh, screaming out very shortly. Uh, deputy, deputy also be following you. So, deputy.
Gentlemen, I wish to blow a point personal privilege. Uh, I have waited now for several minutes for the mayor and his friends to arrive, and they refuse to arrive. I refuse to keep bailing them out of these meetings. They need to adhere, and they need to listen to the public.
Okay. And with that...
Wow, you're serious! So that's just the rule you're just going to be?
So, is there any time? Juan P. De Nera is 30,000 dollars. Uh, we really actually, uh...
These brown supremacists keep showing up and trying to... You guys! You guys are rich as cats! Sit down! You like to give up this day, sit down, give up. Sit down! Sit down again!
This is your fault!
Hey, shut up!
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
That's what they're saying, they're...
That's what we do. That's what we do. We stand up for our country. That's right. That's what we do.
Get out!
That's what we do. We stand up for our country. That's what we do. That's what we do. That's it, you guys! I ain't no racist, you're working out. I just go. I'm in the... Get out, you guys!
Racist!
Everybody!
Wow, so much hatred. Look at all that. Yes, you are racist, we get it, we're sorry for you. This guy wants to steal people's land, right there. That guy right there, keep laughing. Take a nice picture of this guy. This guy. Funny, no peace for us, no. Literally, no. It's funny, if you pay for it, yes or no? And, where's the team? Where's the tiger? Where is it? You are lighter than I am, lady, I'm darker than you.
Thanks. Robert. Stay right here.
Fighting, they're fighting. They're fighting in the entrance.
He took my hat. No, he took my hat. Let me take my hat.
Everybody outside!
He had to take my finger off. He's up! He took my hat, sorry.
Thanks, stay right here. Stay right here. Who?
Get the fuck out of here, guys!
Oh, they put it on the wall, the ceiling. It's a minor damage, it's a minor.
Nigga, you know, you said dashboard? Something you're hiding, now what?
Thanks.
Not for the bendidos that respond to the racists!
Jajajaja. Where's my cheque? Where's my cheque? A ver. Where's my, where's my cheque? Si lo están pagando, a ver, deme mi dinero, por favor. Oh, sí. A ver, a ver. Ah, cash, ta, pendejos. Where's my cheque? Where's my dinero?
The rights of the children, no, they're not here.
Mire, esta ciudad, esta ciudad... Esta ciudad hace quince años es la misma mierda. Ahorita y ayer, a quince años. La misma mierda. Quien reina, nada, nada, quien reina. Quince años, la misma mierda. Sí, eso es lo que yo estoy viviendo por aquí. A mí no me diga que, que es la asesinia, la misma mierda. Okay, entonces, siga. Where's my, where's my dinero? Por favor, deme mi dinero. Si lo pagan, a ver, where's my dinero? Sí, sí, hombre, sí. La mierda.
You're a dying breed! You're a dying breed! A dying breed, you're an extinction! You're about to extinct, you're an extinction, dying breed! You're a drying breathe, you're about to extinct!
Así corren a la gente, con el helicóptero. Que tira todo el viento y todo. What a way to treat people.
Everybody on the board! Everybody's gotta go!
We're out, I'm out.